January 12th, 2022, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee to hold for order. We'll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum, and we have a number of items related to the airport, so we will call on our city engineer, Brian Ibarro. Good morning, Brian.
Thank you. Good morning, Your Honor, and members of the council. Got a few items to present for you and everything, but like as always, you know, please feel free to answer any questions and everything. The first memo is in regards to public improvement 9349. This is going to be the Airport Runway Taxiway Apron Crack Fill and Joint Repair Project. This project only consists of crack sealing, primary runway 1331 and its parallel taxiway, as long as doing some patch slated, patching of isolated distressed areas. The pavement conditions are good, however, this is preventative maintenance that we generally have to do. This project also consists of resealing the concrete joint aprons in front of our AD. This is a very large apron. I have the size in there. It's approximately 250 feet by 780 feet in size, but these joints need to be addressed too for longevity of this project. If acceptable, we're looking to hold a bid opening in March of 2022. That date is not set, but just like every other project, once all costs are known, it'll be packaged up and submitted to the state FAA for a encumbrance agreement, grant agreement with the feds. This project is proposed to be funded 90% fed with our entitlement dollars, MINDOT five and local at 5%. And we're estimating this project about a quarter million dollar project depending on funding availability from the FAA. So at this time, I'm requesting to initiate public improvement 9349 and also accept SCH's professional services agreement for design in an amount of $23,600.
Thank you, Brian.
I'll offer that.
Do you think Jim?
Second.
Justin, thanks. Anyone have any questions for Brian?
What did you say the total expected project price was going to be 400 and?
250.
Approximately about 250,000.
250.
Once we get in the final design, we'll be able to hone in those dollars based on our entitlement dollars availability.
We have a motion saying, you okay to get this on the consent agenda?
Yep.
All fair, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. A motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes.
The next memo is in regards to the airport. Once again, this is public improvement 9348. This is the Airport Fuel System Replacement of the Jet A and 100 Low Lead. The city council did initiate this project. Since then, I've worked with SCH to get a professional services agreement for design. If you recall, the state sent us a letter, the city a letter indicating that they are willing to encumber $600,000 for the fuel system replacement. At that time, the city council did authorize me to submit a response based on their letter. So we've developed a work scope, SCH and I, to, which will generally consist of removing the existing tanks and replacing them with a new 10,000 gallon 100 low lead tank and a new 12,500 gallon Jet A tank. These new tanks will be installed above ground versus their current configuration with low ground. The new system will utilize various components while replacing all other components as necessary to meet not only the FAA, MINDOT, but also the MPCA requirements. Ten and bid opening we're looking at is May 2022. Once again, once all costs are known, I'll be coming back to this council before that with some other authorizations, but we'll be submitting and we're looking to submit the grant application upon a deadline, which is June 30th, 2022. So at this time, I'm requesting to accept SCH's professional services agreement for design in amount of $47,100.
Thank you, Brian. And I just have a question to clarify. So these design agreements with SCH, that's all part of the, that's all part of the complete package? Is that correct?
Correct.
That's paid for?
Our consultants, as long as they're eligible, our consultant design and construction administration and construction contract, these are all eligible under the grant agreement.
Which is typically 90%?
It, it, it varies on, on this particular project for the, the fuel system. The FAA does not provide funding only for new systems. This is replacement. So this will be a little bit unique that the state is contributing quite a considerable amount of money. So we'll have to look and see how far those funds go, but this is probably a 70, 30, 70% state-funded, 30% local.
But it's significant non-local city funds that we're utilizing in order to improve our airport, I guess is the point, and these consulting contracts and engineering.
All these fees are eligible expenses, like in all projects prior.
Thanks, Brian. Someone like to offer?
I'll do that.
Thank you, Krista.
Second.
Thank you, Caroline, and consent agenda on this as well?
Yes.
Okay with you both?
Sure.
Any questions for Brian on the fuel replacement? All fair, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Item number three.
Number three of the airport. Yes, this, this is a public improvement 9350. This is considered the 2022 Airport Automated Weather Observation System, AWAS relocation, replacement, improvement project. This AWAS system at the Fergus Falls Municipal Airport is, is aged equipment. MINDOT contacted me and MINDOT Navionics last year and approached me about this project. They have encumbered some funds for new equipment, therefore they directed me to place what I'm presenting for you into the airport CIP. So in general, with this project, the MINDOT is, will be providing the new AWAS system and furnishing installing this equipment. The city's responsibility will be to build, construct the base foundations, new power feed and gravel access road. That will be the city's responsibility associated with this project. That being said, just like every other state with this particular project, airside need, this, our share of this project, which would be considered the underground work, is to be proposed, proposed to be funded at a 70, 30 ratio, 70% state, 30 local. So SCH has done some preliminary work and we think this is a, this is a project that should be done, the opportunity given presented by the state that should be done. So at this time, I'm requesting city council to initiate public improvement 9350, which is the Airport AWAS replacement project, and to accept SCH's professional services agreement for design and construction administration in an amount of $25,800. If I might note, our, our share or our underground portion that's funded through a 70, 30 share, we're looking at right now anticipating about $110,000 for the city's responsibility, I should say, versus our share. So just to clarify.
Thank you, Brian. Would someone like to offer a motion to bring this?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Thanks, Scott. Consent agenda on this okay as well? Any questions for Brian on the airport, on the automated weather observation system? If not, all in favor of bringing this to the council on Monday, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. A motion carries.
Will that also go on the consent?
Yeah, we'll put it on the consent as well. And last item on the airport, I believe, is a CRRS AA grant.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, just recently I've been informed by MINDOT that the city has received an Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program Agreement, the acronym ACRGD. I just want to tell you right now, this memo does include a lot of acronyms, so bear with me on this one. And airport funding, this is through the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Act, or however some might want to pronounce it. This is similar to a previous one that we just submitted. This is, this, this type of funding is a direct funding from the FAA that is channel acted through the MINDOT Aeronautics. It's for funds cost related to the operations, personnel, cleaning, sanitation, janitorial service for combating the spread of pathogens at the airport and debt service payments. Any airport development directly rated to combating the spread of pathogens is also eligible for this type of funding. Eligible costs must have been, must have been covered and reimbursed using other, must not have been covered by any other state and federal grants. So this is an independent program once again. So the reimbursement term, if acceptable to this council, the grant period within July 31st, 2025. This is 100% federally funded grant and would be such, subject to specific audit requirements of these expenditure, expended funds. This is nothing new. We do this all the time too as well. So I did want to, I did contact our regional FAA director and everything just to get a little bit more grasp understanding, and I put a little informational note, just trying to give a little recap of some of the current programs and everything since the COVID money, I guess we could call it, that the city has, has been presented, you know, number one being the CARES. We dealt with this back in June 2020. We also did Airport Rescue Grant Program, ARGP. The council recently authorized me to submit an application for that. I have not heard back on that one yet. And the current action was the Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program, ACRGP. So at this time, we've read through this information and consulted with MINDOTS and everything. So requesting the city council to authorize city staff to accept the Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program offer in the amount of $13,000.
Thank you, Brian. Someone like to offer that? Brent, thank you. Thank you, Jim. Krista tied for second. Bring that on the consent agenda as well. Any questions for Brian? All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Say, Brian, just to, you know, this is a lot of public funding. Obviously, the airport is a, you know, an asset to the community. It's often maybe goes under the radar a little bit. And I wonder, and we have a new FBO that had a lot of spirited conversation around the hiring of that FBO, and maybe it would be sometime in the first half of 2022, it'd be good to just bring the FBO in and talk about airport operations, how things are going, what's expected, what some of their plans and goals are, and just keep that dialogue open with the city council. And because a lot, like again, a lot of money does go to that airport. Those of us who don't use the airport maybe just don't have a real understanding of exactly how that airport's utilized. So nothing pressing, but just maybe something to consider for the first.
Yeah, certainly. I can arrange something like that. Obviously, you know, being new out there, trying to get acclimated with our facility and that, but I'm sure they'd be more than willing to come and speak with this council.
Sure.
Perhaps things such as this. Certainly.
Thank you, Brian. And item number five is a Campus View Estates Public Improvement 5958. Again, Brian Ibarro.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We've substantially completed the project's plans and specifications for public improvement 5958. If you recall, this is a campus view of states development. Resuming the construction cost is approximately $1,240,000. Because of this, we must publicly advertise for bids for a minimum of 21 days and noted also for, as a Minnesota statute for 29 process. We don't have the official bid opening date, but I anticipate very soon here in February. If, if we receive favorable bids, those costs will be utilized in the final assessment rules. And then I will be presenting this and working with Bill and will be developing a development agreement to present to this council based on the type of funding this project is set up for. But we anticipate sometime in early March to bring all this back to the city council. Because this project is to be funded through general obligation tax bonds by levying special assessments to the benefiting properties. A collection of tax increment will replace the special assessments to finance these bonds. But like I mentioned, we anticipate sometime in March coming back to the council for a few recommendations and the developers agreement as well. So at this time, I'm requesting this council to accept the project plans and specifications and also authorization to advertise for bids for public improvement 5958.
Thank you, Brian. Someone like to?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Scott?
The plans for this, do they include sidewalks on all, all of it, so both sides of the new street and then also on park running north to south? Are there sidewalks in there?
I, I do recall one, in the development, the Campus View Drive, there is a sidewalk on one side. I can certainly work with the contractor. There has been discussions about putting along park as well, and that's what we're working on at this time.
When we had visited about this and the last time the subject was on the table, I know there was some conversation about sidewalks, and I guess I expected to see that in the final plans. On both sides of the new street and then along park.
Yeah, I believe there's an extension from this development up to the Veterans Home and everything that we haven't identified a funding source for this. But the construction of the driveways that they have constructed thus far do include a sidewalk cap along Park Street for facilitating sidewalk.
Thanks, Scott. Any other questions for Brian? We have a motion second to bring this to the council on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Item number six is the RTC Phase III Scope of Work. And again, Brian Ibarro.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you, as in regards to the Regional Treatment Center Phase III Preservation Project, I've attached some revised cost estimates from this project based on our preliminary past discussions in regards to the work scope for this project. I'd like to turn it to, if you have those included in your packets, we've done some refinement to what we might consider the base bid. I have that highlighted in the first page, and I just want to walk through quickly what that work scope consists of. I also do have a map included there just for reference, you know, for the building designations for this campus. So under the base bid is what we've refined to. I'm still open for discussion how the council wants to proceed. Administration, building number one, we're looking to window replacement, mold remediation, reattach tower globe, electrical grounding for the system, adding building ventilation with louvers and fabric. This is temporary with fabric ducking, remove main staircase closures and seal door access from building one to remaining buildings. This work is an attempt to hopefully address some of the mold mitigation in that building and in hopes that we could eventually, under the council's direction, if they want to open that up for the tower itself for tours and that, but that's yet to be determined. The next under the base bid is building 23, which is east attached. We're looking under the base bid just to replace some damaged roof shingles and underlayment. Next building, building 27, west attached, is to scoping under the base bid to replace damaged roof shingles and some EDN roofing. Also a base bid for pretty much all the buildings, I'll call it, remaining buildings, including the one I just described, is to repair any rain gutters and downspouts, and we're also looking to excavate and repair ground floor windows. This basically will consist of sealing up these, these windows, excavating down, putting some contact graded, cheating material, sealing these up and then backfilling and doing some positive grade. All that being said, with what I've described that's enclosed in here, we're looking at a overall project cost estimated at this time of about $1.4 million. Now, if you turn to the second, the second schedule estimate, which is highlighted in the upper left-hand corner called alternates, this is just an enhancement of what I've further detailed work that we're looking to do, such as building 23, instead of just replacing the shingles, we're looking to replace the entire roof system. Same thing with building 27, we're looking to replace all the shingles with some underlayment. And also in addition is the entire campus, which is to install some interior security system with motion detection and also some exterior security cameras. Where else remaining? And I want to know too on this alternate one, building 27 is to repair and replace some damaged brick stone. That's pretty significant, about half a million dollars. But with these alternate packages, this does not include the base, base numbers I just presented previously. But if we want to proceed with the alternates, this is estimated about $1.4, $1.5 million just as the alternates. So what I have for you with these refined scopes, we, we clearly don't have enough money to proceed with these projects, but it's up to this council to, if they want to direct me to work with the SCH indeed, who's administering these grants, to number one, check for eligibility, and number two, work on a professional services agreement based on the work scope that we're providing, either in the base bid or a combination thereof. So at this time, I'm just requesting discussion and authorization to procure professional services agreement from StanTech for the design of the RTC Phase III project.
Thank you, Brian. For, before we get to discussion, someone like to offer that motion and bring that to the council?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista. Thank you, Scott. Questions? Scott, go ahead.
Okay.
I anticipated that.
Well, that's, I think to, to introduce the comments, I wanted to bring to light the letter that we received from the Fergus Falls Heritage Preservation Commission last September that pointed out and referred back to the campus master plan that was recently completed. After thanking the council for completing the master plan, Chris Schulke, the author of this letter from the Heritage Preservation Commission, said that "Under the plan's campus condition overview, the consultant summarized the complex as in solid condition and structurally stable, concluding that the campus's overall condition and structural soundness make it an excellent candidate for reuse." It emphasized that there were several mitigation projects that were expected or needed to be done to preserve the building and prepare it for redevelopment and reuse, and those basically get addressed in what's been presented now by Brian. But what they had highlighted at that time was roof and flashing repairs, backfill to reduce groundwater infiltration, active dehumidification, boarding up the first level windows for security and maintenance. And I think that the, what's been presented by Brian here today addresses these things in a pretty good way, and I think that we're moving in the right direction as it's been suggested. Now granted that we've got $1.7 million to work with and about $3 million worth of stuff's penciled out here, we wouldn't be able to do all of this, but we could certainly do an awful lot of it. And it would be my hope that we could do all of the base bid items and then add the security items from the alternates, and we'd still be only at about $1.56 million. And that would really cover a great deal of what's been suggested to be done. So I'd start with that, other than the motion that is on the table is to do, to what, or is there not one yet?
There's a motion to bring this to the council to procure a service agreement, professional services.
Yeah, and so, but you're going to need to know exactly what that agreement's going to expect to include, right, Brian?
Well, yeah, I was hoping, yes, Your Honor, Councilman Quam, yeah. That's my professional great agreement request is based on the, the work items that I have described in the base bid and in alternates.
Then you'll come, that's my question too. So then we'll come back to the council with actual authorization for work to be completed on these?
Prepare the plans and specifications based on these work items.
Sure, okay. Then the last thing I guess I would add is, given that the estimates
here would be, again, $1.56 million for the base bid items and 85 and 85 for the two security items on the alternates, that would even still leave us a little room, $150,000 just under that, that even though it's not listed here, I would suggest you add or include doing the roof on building 29, the sometimes called the Memorial Building, and then any smaller amount that might be still available could be used for what we would call cleanup. We discussed earlier in a previous meeting, just cleaning out things like ceiling tile and carpeting that really need to go to try and make it a better situation there. That's what I would have.
Thanks, Scott. Any other? Yes, Brent?
Yeah, I mean, we got the both views here. When it comes to the tower, the main building, you know, I'm willing to look at everything when it comes to that, but when it comes to the remainder of the structure, basically all I'm interested in doing on that is keeping the water out and keeping the people out who are vandalizing the buildings. And I understand if we put the plywood on all the bottom windows and do it right, then we shouldn't need the security system. And that's my only concern as far as the city's liability because they're still breaking in left and right. And like with Anthony, the less we spend, the more it's going to look better when we go back to the state in a few years down the road, if we have to take more down, you know, because I don't want to put all this money into the other structures other than minimum maintenance on it and then turn around and say, hey, we need another three, four million dollars to take down the remainder of these buildings, and then they're going to look at us and say, but you just put all our money into fixing those buildings. And so if it comes down to doing a lot of repairs other than minimum maintenance, I'll vote against it, except for the main tower. So my only worry is security and just keeping Mother Nature out of it until when and if a developer comes, and we haven't had any really good luck with developers on this. So that's just my slate on it.
Thanks, Brent. Yeah, it seems to me, both of you, Brent and Scott, you know, if we look at the base bid, the tower, securing the tower, looking at the mold remediation and then east and west, we're just basically keeping the water out, the gutters and downspouts, most security that Scott talked about is going to be right around, close to the amount of money that we have. So I feel like we're going in the right direction to secure the building, make sure that we're taking care of the water issues. And timeframe, as far as when would you expect to have this back at the council for?
Probably for sure the next committee meeting.
Okay. To look at further details of exactly what that agreement would look like and what items would be in or whatnot.
Correct.
All right. Thank you, Brian. So we have a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Actually, it's Tuesday night, right? Yeah. Sorry, I keep saying Monday night, Tuesday night. Item number seven is an overview of the 2022 Summer Projects, and this is Brian's last hurrah.
I apologize, Your Honor. Yes, I, I don't, I'm not quite prepared for this one here at this time.
Okay.
So I'm hoping at the next committee meeting to present you a little overview of our upcoming projects, so if that's all right.
You took the first six. We'll let you pass.
All right.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. All right. Item number eight is an audit engagement letter. Sounds fun. We'll call on our fire instructor, Bill Sawmore.
All right. Good morning, Your Honor. Thank you. Yeah, it's time to approve an audit engagement letter again. We've done this every three years, and our auditor sent us an engagement letter over the other day. So it'd be for the years, year ends, '21, '22, '23. The, the city is required by state statute to have an audit each year, and then we submit our audit to the state auditor by June 30th of each year. And of course, city council gets that at the first meeting in June prior to sending that to the state auditor. You'll see in the memo, currently, we have been paying $34,500. Those fees have been stable since 2018. So 2018, '19, and '20, that's what those fees have been. The audit firm is proposing going to 36 to 25, or about a 5% increase. The audit of the component units, which would be PEG access and visit Fergus Falls, they're included within our audit report, would be $3,850. And then if and when we have to have single audits, when we receive federal funds in excess of $750,000, it would be $3,000 to $5,000, they're estimating for the single audit that they do per program. Now, they give a range because you do work on one program, you've already then done more work on a second program if you had to audit that, so then the fees on that second program become less. So I do recommend that we approve this. Bergen KDV, they are very strong in the knowledge of local governments, and this is one of their specialty areas. And we've been with them with several years. And you do see that around the state with cities. You do typically stay with your auditors. The audit firm does rotate staff through, so we always have new staff coming in, so new eyes looking at things. I also did reach out to other outstate regional cities to see, are we still in the ballpark with our fees? And we certainly are, and I would expect to see that when they're holding our fees flat for three years at a time and then giving an inflationary increase there. And if you look over the six years, it would maybe come out to be about a 1.5% increase each year if we average that out over all those years. So that is my recommendation that we go forward with that.
Question for you, Bill. So I read several months ago, I don't remember when. So the state auditor, so the state auditor does some audits on local governments and then sometimes cities such, it sounds like we go out and have a, have a private firm. Can you explain that?
Yeah, you could do it either way, with the state auditor or contract with private firms. I think, and I don't have the exact statistics on this, but the majority of cities are with private firms versus state auditor. I'd actually have to look and see which cities, you know, are the state auditors auditing. So, and I know years ago in talking through that, it often will even cost more when having the state auditor come in. So, now I don't have any data to back that up.
No, that's fine. I just was, I just remembered when you talked, and I just remembered an article I read several months ago.
And Commissioner Rognes may be able to help me on this, but a number of years ago, the state auditors audited all counties, I believe, but I think that was changed in the past to allow counties to go with private firms.
Yes.
I think, okay. So historically, state auditors were kind of solely auditing counties, but that was opened up too.
Jim?
Bill, having worked with this auditor a number of years, it's easier it's easier for our people to work with them because you know what they're looking for.
Absolutely, yeah.
A lot of stuff they're looking for, you have in advance, you don't have to dig it up.
Yep, we start our audit preparation actually now in January. And we do this until June, till we come to you in June. So it's kind of the, we say around here, my life revolves around the budget half the year and the audit the other half of the year. But you are correct. Having that consistency, it helps us. And I like to have an audit firm that knows more than I do about local government finances because then they're a resource as well, too.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Scott?
Just a question. When you're comparing the costs, you know, we're, this 36,000-ish price with what other cities might pay, do they compare it based on what? Population of the city, size of the city's budget? What kinds of factors are the important parts?
I just reached out to some outstate cities, so like Alexandria, Bemidji, Detroit Lakes, Morehead, so more of our outstate. Even though we, City of Fergus Falls really compares also to a lot of metro cities because we're involved in so many things. City of Fergus Falls is running a landfill, we run a library. A lot of that in other cities is done at the county level, actually. So when you look at comparisons, we can be very similar to a metro city as well. But I looked at those outstate cities as my comparison. And I did that six years, or three years ago as well. And everyone has kind of stayed roughly the same with some inflationary increases. It looked very similar as it did three years ago.
Thanks, Bill. Would someone like to make a motion that we bring this to the council? Thank you, Caroline.
I'll second.
Thanks, Krista. Any further questions for Bill? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
We know we're in good hands in the finance department. We have Bill Sawmore on board. Thanks, Bill. Item number nine, we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth, to go over an overview of ordinance 22, eighth series, dealing with animals.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Good morning, members. I just want to mention, Bill failed to mention, we get good pricing on the audit because our staff is good to work with. And Bill and Sandy literally deliver it in a package. So they're not spending a ton of time having to comb through things, having to ask for things. And because they do a good job and they're efficient, we can keep those fees down. So that's answered your question. But I got a call this morning from Guy. He's on his way to Fargo dealing with another water main break and having to get supplies related to that. So I just want to lead off by saying I appreciate the public's patience. As we see these warmer temperatures in January, February, we often have main breaks and other things. So I appreciate the patience. I know the one by the school is kind of a high-profile one. It's caused a lot of inconveniences for folks. And that's an ongoing issue as of this morning. So thank you for folks' patience and working around that. But as a result, I'm going to, on a high level, talk about the animal ordinance. I certainly haven't studied it the way that Guy and his department has. But in your packet, you'll see that we're proposing a significant number of changes to that ordinance. And mostly those are related to cleaning up language of the existing ordinance and/or making changes to allow for that to better match the process that's in place. So not a lot of heavy lifting or major changes, a lot of color on the page, but that's more grammatical and changing process. The biggest change that I would like to highlight is that we're proposing that we remove the ability to have a fourth pet. If the council doesn't want to go down that road, I would fully understand and we can get on board with that. But we just don't see this being an issue, especially if you guys recall, probably three, four years ago, we had an individual come in that wanted a fourth dog. And we changed the ordinance to allow for the ability to do that. And that individual ended up moving out of town. And we haven't had a single person that's gone forward with that. So if you want to leave that as the, as an opportunity for people, that's totally fine. But I figure if three seems to be sufficient, if nobody's knocking on the door, it's not four. And quite honestly, we haven't had a ton of issues the way it is right now. Biggest issue we have is related to dog bites. And that's, I would say, slowed down in the last few years. I don't know if staff would agree with me, but generally when those get to a level of severity, I'm involved and I haven't been for a few years. So I think most of this stuff is working fine. Staff wanted to clarify some things, get the ordinance to match our process. And then, like I mentioned, the big one is just moving the number of total pets from four down to three. And just to get ahead of it, we're not going to chase down folks that already have four pets. We're not going to ask you to get rid of a family member. If we make this change, those pets are grandfathered in. And we just ask that people be mindful of, you know, what having many, many animals in a town like ours, what impacts that has on your neighbors and on properties and things like that. If anybody has questions, glad to take a stab at them. Otherwise, you'll have that opportunity again on Tuesday night. And we would be looking for, on the consent agenda, to direct the city attorney to draft these changes. He's magically already done so with the work of staff and then would have the ability to introduce this for the first reading later that evening.
Thanks, Andrew. And like all ordinances, as we introduce this, go through the process, first reading, introduction, first reading, then also a second reading. So if we hear from the public, we always have time to modify this over the course of the next month as it works through the ordinance process.
Absolutely. And we encourage folks to give their feedback if they have an opinion. Guy will be here on Tuesday to answer any more specific questions if you folks think of them or have at that time.
Sure, thanks. Someone like to offer that we bring?
I'll offer that, and I have one comment.
Thanks, Brent. Go ahead, Scott.
At the end of this, as it's not uncommon with long ordinance changes when they get published, we just have a thing that includes the, kind of the summary of it. And the summary, as it's printed in what we've been presented, doesn't include titles for all of the chapters. And I think that if you could just add the titles to all of them rather than just the chapter numbers, that would add some clarity. And the other, you know, besides the dogs and cats being a pretty significant piece of this, there was also a pretty good chunk of this dealing with chickens. And we've had, over the course of time, a number of conversations about how we're going to deal with chickens in town. And I think that at least having that in the headlines of the summary would allow for that to be, for people to be aware of that.
Sure, yep. No, I think that's, that's good. And maybe just to that end, Lynn could maybe say if we've had any issues with the chickens? I don't believe we have. I haven't.
No, we changed our ordinance a number of years ago. We moved from 10 to 20. And I think we're right around that 12 or 13. Most years we haven't seen a huge utilization of it. But those that are using it are doing a really good job. And they're all getting their neighbors' consent and following the sanitary, no-haze things that you would think about. We haven't had any complaints that I can think of in years.
Great.
Okay.
Maybe one question.
Yeah, go ahead, Justin.
You know, I support this and obviously we haven't had a huge issue with this. If this were to pass and go forward back to three, is there a process for a family if they wanted to have a fourth through like a variance? Or is that?
You would, yeah, Your Honor.
I don't want to go back and forth on having to change this, but just wanted to be clear.
I think now's the time to decide that. We do, this would remove the variance to be able to do that.
I think when you were saying removing the fourth, you can have four pets, but the variance that we kind of had in there was from four dogs or four cats. You can still have up to four pets. It's not three dogs and one cat, or three cats, two and two. But having that, that request that we had a number of years ago, they wanted four dogs plus the people to have the other animals as well.
And that was the understanding I had as well. But when I read that draft that was in your packet this morning, that's not how it reads. So we will have to make additional changes to that because the way that version reads is that it would allow for three total, whether it be cats or dogs. I didn't know if staff, including Guy, want to do it on that route. So I presented it that way this morning. But my understanding was exactly like Lynn's. We're striking the, the ability to get a fourth dog. So you don't have four of the same species. But we would leave the four total in play. So you could have a combination of cats and dogs to equal that number. So two cats, two dogs, three dogs, one cat, whatever that looks like. If you want to allow the ability for somebody to get the variance to have a fourth dog, then we would want to not make those changes now. But I wouldn't recommend us just continuing to go back and forth as people.
Yeah, I did, because it hasn't been an issue. I just wanted to be clear on the process. It sounds like if we do change this, you know, we want to have a variance in place for somebody to go that route. And I would support, I mean, three cats and one dog is different than three dogs. So, you know, if we could clarify what their intent would be, I think.
And again, they would need the neighbors' consent. A lot of neighbors aren't real willing to let their next-door neighbor have four dogs.
Right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to bring this to the council on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. That motion carries. Last item on the agenda this morning is a bicycle and pedestrian master plan update. And we'll call on Antonio from the, oh, I'm sorry, Claire Beck. We'll call on Claire Beck to introduce Antonio from the community design group. Our community development manager, Claire Beck. Good morning, Clara.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council members. Yes, we have Mr. Antonio Rozell with us this morning. He has been working on this master plan for many months now under the direction of a steering committee with whom he has been in fairly constant contact. So I'll just high-level introduce this to you. If you haven't already, the Bike and Ped Master Plan draft is out on the city's website and is available for comment right now. We have received some comments from the public, but we would love to also get council member input on that. So you can navigate to the, under the departments tab on our city website is the community development department. And under plans, studies, and research, you can find that draft plan and then a form for submitting your comments. And you've got until January 27th to submit those comments at this time. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Rozell to give us an update on what he's been working on and what you might find in the draft.
Thanks, Clara. Good morning, Antonio.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Clara. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, council members, city staff. It's a pleasure to be here with you this morning. Thank you very much for the invitation. What I have for you today is just a brief overview of the plan and the process that we went through to develop it. So I will share my screen, go through a few slides. And of course, we'll be excited to take questions from you if you have any for me. So I begin by sharing my screen right now. And we will go from there. And hopefully, it shows up and you can see that I have a slide of the cover of the plan. And let me know if you can't see it for some reason. So the plan is doing a collaboration between, I'm led by the City of Fergus Falls, of course, and by City of Fergus Falls staff. And it's a project that was funded through generous grants from West Central Initiative and Partnership for Health. We had active guidance of a project steering committee and also had the participation from Fergus Falls Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, convened by the city by Pedal Fergus Falls, which is a very active group in the community. And we also received comments and guidance from more than 500 residents of the city during the plan's engagement. The document is available for review right now on the city website, as Clara mentioned. And we anticipate going until near the end of January. So another couple of weeks that we'll be receiving comments. The way that we developed our work was really through an intense process of engagement with members of the project steering committee. And we used a number of tools. I'm going to stop for one second. I just want to make sure that you're able to see my images. I am not getting a feedback here that it's working, so.
You can see that, Antonio.
Clara, I wonder if you could let me know if the images are coming through?
You're good.
Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everything is, is visible. We used a number of tools. Of course, as you know, we developed, we began this work right at the height of COVID. And so it was very tricky. It was not possible to meet in person. And so we developed a lot of tools for engaging the Fergus Falls community using technology tools. Right now, I'm showing you an image of what's called a Wiki map. You know, a map that we share with the community. People are placing comments about issues, ideas for improvements and so on. And that was a really key part of how we got recommendations about routes and about locations. We had a community survey where we got people's preferences for types of facilities. We had a robust social media campaign coordinated with and by the City of Fergus Falls using your social media that got people to the website and to the different tools that we had available. And we really had, you know, what I feel is a really robust engagement process, even though we were not at the time able to meet in person. We used a lot of innovative tools, collaborative commenting on maps, et cetera. The plan itself is based on a seven E's model. What that means is, of course, there's a lot of emphasis on engineering the different facilities, but also on a whole set of supportive measures. Education, evaluation programs, encouragement to get people out trying the new facilities. We are also building on the excellent work that the community has already completed over the years. You know, you are acknowledged as a silver-level bicycle-friendly community by the League of American Bicycles. You're also a walk-friendly community. So there's a wonderful amount of work that you've done over the last decade where the recommendations build on that to go to the next, to the next levels and to increase the number of people who are walking and biking in the community. The plan includes proposed pedestrian and bicycle improvements. Specific routes are identified. We have specific treatments to make facilities, to make intersections safer. They're identified in the plan and described. We're talking about how we're going to maintain facilities to again facilitate more people walking and biking year-round. We also include recommendations on how to deploy some of these treatments so that they can be out in front of people as quickly and inexpensively as possible. And so that we can begin to test them out and build a case for potentially later on building permanent implementations. I thought just now, a lot of our facilities and kind of infrastructure, I wanted to make sure to also mention, the plan is structured as a seven E's plan. So we include not only the engineering plan, but there's a chapter on education measures, like for example, bicycle rodeos, maps. There's a chapter that provides encouragement measures like open streets, festivals, and kind of promotions that we can do to get people to at least, to try biking and walking at least once a year or once a month as part of their lives. We also talk about different enforcement measures that can help make walking and biking safer for people and have better understanding between drivers, walkers, bicyclists, et cetera. Evaluation is a really key component of the plan. And it's something where the city, right now, currently, we don't have a lot of programs in place. And so we made recommendations on how quickly we can evaluate investments, make the case by measuring before, during, and after an investment or a potential demonstration is made. So that we can say, this is something that is really going to get us to our goal, which is more people walking and biking all of the time, or more of the time, I should say. We talk also about equity considerations to keep in mind. And a really key part as well is thinking about engagement and how that is a great way of helping to build community understanding about, for example, if there's a sidewalks proposal or a new bicycle facility, so that people understand what is being proposed, why, and why it's important and useful. So there are some recommendations on that as well. Furthermore, the plan also includes an appendix that brings forward some of the documents that we've already assembled. For example, we have a wonderful complete streets resolution from 2012 that's included in the appendix. We have facilities that were developed, well, that were recommended in the 2012 Safe Routes to School Plan. We want to emphasize some of the work that's still to be completed. And so that's also provided as an appendix. We have a toolbox of facilities and treatments. And then of course, the results from engagement where every single comment we collected from the survey and the Wiki map is included. So with that, I will stop my presentation and make sure to be ready to answer any and all of your questions.
Thank you, Antonio. Thanks for that presentation. Thanks for the work. It's, it's very encouraging to see that there's so much community engagement, to see more than, you know, or close to 500 community residents and comments being participating. That's, that's a success. So we commend you on that. Thank you for that. Council, any questions for Antonio? I would just remind the public that this public comment period is open until January 27th. Is that correct, Antonio?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, we encourage the public to continue submitting comments and engaging with this plan, so that we can make it as representative of the community as we can. With that, I would say thank you, Antonio, and we'll look forward to the final presentation, and thank you to the group that's working on that. Clara, thank you for facilitating that through the city. Any further questions to come? Scott?
Was the master plan, as it's being developed, funded? How was it funded? How was this put together?
Grant from the West Central Initiative that the city matched. I believe it was seventy-five hundred from West Central Initiative, and that was matched by the city, if I remember correctly. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
And I should also add, I think that Partnership for Health was a funder as well. So, there are two organizations, West Central Initiative and Partnership for Health. Both, according to my understanding, were part of that funding as well, along with the city, of course.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Any other further questions? Thank you, Antonio. We look forward to the presentation of the final report.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with residents of Fergus Falls, with your staff, with your community, and I'm really happy to have been a part of this effort, and I really wish you great success, and I'm excited to meet with you next time, as you consider it for becoming a part of your city's future actions. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you, Antonio. And with that, if there's nothing more to come before the committee, we are adjourned. Have a great day, everyone.